Please stand with the board.
Good evening, everyone. I hear what's going on. This week, regents are finishing up. Today, all the caped gowns were distributed to all the seniors. And tomorrow is the clapout, where all the seniors walk around their elementary school in their caped gown while the students and teachers who kind of started their meeting clap them out as a way to say thank you to those who really started it all. And graduation is Thursday at RCC at 7:00 p.m. And finally, the last day of school. I just want to thank everyone for a great year. I really enjoy coming to all these meetings, honestly, and delivering what was going on at the high school. I just hope everyone has a great summer.
Matt, thank you very much. We really appreciate the student reports at every meeting. You did a great job. You had tough shoes to fill last year, and now you're two tougher shoes to fill next year. But thank you very much. I know it takes a lot of time out of your schedule studying what happens, so we greatly appreciate it. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, one point zero eight. Minutes of the regular meeting of June 5th, 2018. Chairman, wish to accept those as so stated. Teresa, seven.
Seven.
Matt, all those who've been here by saying aye.
Aye.
Two super tenants come. It's nobody. Two super tenants come.
We have some students here from the crew team who finished higher than any other crew team in the past, and they did so at Nationals. They finished sixth, which, how they got to sixth was really an accomplishment. It's not one race, it's multiple races. Coach Jacoby is here with his assistant, Mr. Hawk, I think, in the back. So Craig and Russell, if you'll come up and tell us a little bit about the program, then we have some certificates we'd like to share with the five students. One captain, right?
Captain.
So, the boys, they worked extremely hard to get to where they got to this year. Actually, as a boat, they rode together as juniors. In their junior year, they set as a goal to be able to qualify for Nationals. They went to Saratoga, and they finished fourth in New York State. The top three boats get to advance. We petitioned, and they made it as an at-large boat. Their time was good enough. We went to Camden, where the Nationals were last year, and we were in our heat, and we didn't qualify to advance. So the guys came back this year. We had one subtle change. Jordan came into the boat, and he was a senior. The other fellow who was in the boat was a year behind, so we moved him to a boat that actually helped that boat really improve. Those four seniors and Sarah, their coxswain, set a goal, again, to make it back to Nationals. The process is you have to go to the state championship and finish top three. They finished second schoollastically in New York State. The form that beat us was from Nichols School, which is a private school in Buffalo. They beat us at New York State by over eight seconds, eight and change. We qualified, we went to Camden again on the Cooper River, where the championships are. In our heat, there was a boat from Oak Ridge Academy, which was a very highly thought of boat, and another boat that was very strong. We went out, and we finished third. The top two boats from the six heats advanced automatically to semifinals. We were put into a wild card round, which is a second chance opportunity to advance. And we had about three and a half hours to think about it, have a little lunch, to talk about it. We made a couple of adjustments, and the guys went out, and they won their heat, which was quite an accomplishment, because those other boats were pretty good. So now, we had to go home, get some sleep, come back the next morning, and race in the semifinals. To get to this point, no other suffered boat, and we've been to Nationals four times now, had advanced past the first round. So just to get to the semifinals was quite an accomplishment. We were in our semifinal heat with Nichols, who had beaten us by eight seconds at the New York State championship. We went out, and the boys raced a great race, and they lost by that much. So that'd be in a half a second that we lost thirteen and beat us by eight seconds. So if you count your head, eight seconds, that's quite a long time. So that was a great accomplishment. So we advanced to finals. Only the top six boats out of thirty-six make it to finals. And again, we had, because there was thunderstorms in the afternoon, we only had a two and a half hour turnaround. It's tough to go from the best race you've ever run in two and a half hours to come back in four races in two days. So we had an extra race, and they really rode hard, but we finished last in the championship, but still sixth overall is better than any boat that we've ever had. They set a goal, and they met their goal, and we're all very proud of what they were able to achieve. So congratulations.
We have new vessels this year?
Yes, we did. Well, last year.
Last year.
We did have some new boats. And go back in time a little bit. One of the members of the boat, Jake Hoffman, was doing an internship for State Senator Carlucci. When the program was started back in 2009, we received a grant from, at the time, it was State Senator Moore. And Jake said, "Didn't we get a grant yet?" So he got the ball. We only talked to Senator Carlucci, found out what needed to be done in order to write a grant, did pretty much all the legwork, had a little help from some adults, but basically Jake did all the legwork, worked closely with the assistant to the senator, and he was able to secure a grant of $100,000 for the team. We were able to go out and buy four new boats with that money. So the boat that they came in sixth with was one of the new boats.
Feel free to chime in. He keeps saying "boys," though. Does Sarah get any credit?
Yes, she does. So why don't you all stand up? So obviously... The owner of the boat, sitting in the bow seat, was Jake. Second seat was Jordan. Third seat was Danny, and the stroke seat, the fourth seat, was Matt Dean. The job of Matt is to control the other four guys. As fast as he rows, everyone has to follow him. But really, the person who's the quarterback or the coach of the boat is Sarah Dopkin, the coxswain. Her job is to, she has a little box with a rate meter on it. She can see what the stroke rate is. She's got to understand what the stroke means. It's not a speedometer. It just gets a gauge of how fast they're rowing. And over a course of 1,500 meters is the race course. She's got to realize, like, where they are in the race, and if they need to increase the rate, bring the rate down. If she feels that they're rowing too fast, maybe she needs to slow them down so they can save energy for the sprint at the end. There's a lot of moving parts that go on. She's got to keep these four guys in line. And there's no question that her guidance and her experience really made a big difference, because this is now her second year as a coxswain. She's learned a lot about her craft, and without her guiding these guys, I'm certainly, I'm sure that they were the engine, but this was the computer and the engine that needed all that. So congratulations.
Guys and ladies, come up when we call your name, and we'd like to get a picture with you, okay? We'll start off with Sarah. Jordan. Daniel. Daniel. Jake. And Matthew. So if anybody wants to take a picture of these handsome posts?
Do they want to get in on the picture?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My coach is like lay across.
Yeah, now get your position. Go.
Hide in the back.
Thanks. Good job, Jason.
Thanks, everybody.
Coach, good, too. Congrats. And Layla was getting down here a few minutes late. The other thing I wanted to include under my comments that we will be receiving more information on is something we've been researching for the last about eighteen months, and that's to look at a social-emotional program for our students and staff to help teach them. And the program that we've looked at most closely, or we think is most beneficial for our students, is the Yale Emotional Intelligence Program. And so I've created a little packet here. It's kind of got a cover sheet, and there are six articles that are associated with it, but it's something that's very powerful in terms of controlling your emotions to be as successful as possible. And as the board knows, it was one of my goals over the last year and a half to get something in place. And we begin our training, actually, on Monday. Where thirty-four of our staff will be going to begin the training. It's a week-long training to start. The board will have an information session by Lisa Castaldo. She's the lead person on this. You'll have that information after their week's worth of training, but then there will be a cohort experience for all boards that are involved. And this is the second cohort. The first cohort just finished their first year. It's a three-year program. Our cohort, I believe, we meet on September 27th of this year. All board members will be invited, but it's, I hope that you have the time to read this. And I've got extra copies for the new board members coming on, so make sure I get those to you tonight. But I think you'll be impressed with what Yale has done with this and the success that they've achieved in other school districts. But in light of our time tonight and us being a little late getting down here, I think I'll cut it off at that. Lisa Castaldo will be giving a more in-depth presentation in either July or August, probably the August coordination.
All right, thank you. Okay, public participation. So public participation has to action items. Only those are the items behind me, 2.01 through...
2.40.
2.01 through 2.40, action items only. This session will last thirty minutes, please, if you would like to make any comments. Respect to action items only. Set up to a party to state the name of the school affiliation, leave some sort of contact information for the appropriate personnel that can get back to you. And again, with respect to policy, pray for speaking on any personnel or student of the district. All right, we're going on my glasses, but I don't see anybody moving around, so we will close that portion of the meeting. Okay, 2.01. 2.01 through... I'm not pulling anything, right?
I have questions on 237 and 239. No 239, I have no questions. 237 and some numbers changed. Only 237. I have a question on that, and I'd like to pull 204 to 216.
237?
Yes, please.
Just to make sure we...
Oh, actually, I have... 219 was the other one. 2.19, 2.37 are good questions, and I'd like to pull items 204 to 2.16 for this discussion.
Okay, so 2.19, natural gas and electricity reservation, correct?
Correct.
And then 2.37, service contract for workshop, the energy bus for school leaders leadership.
Correct.
Correct? I'll pull those two. Are they...
Clarification questions.
Well, is it affect your vote, or...
Hmm.
Okay, so I'll pull those. Okay, so then, with respect to...
And 204, 216.
Oh, I got that, I got that. Angela, you ready? Okay, so with respect to 201 through 203, 217, 218, 220 through 236, and 238 through 240. Respect of those items. Using a consent agenda, Chairman, can I wish to accept those as so stated?
So...
Teresa, second. Paul. Paul, any discussion? All those who've been here by saying aye. Aye, opposed, objections, unanimous. Okay, so 2.04 through 2.16.
And other, with the questions first, 219 could we give them?
What's that again?
Can we resolve the questions on 219?
Yeah, we can do that. We want to do those first. Okay, 219. Chairman, can I wish to accept 219 as so stated? Teresa, second. Paul? Paul, excellent. Okay, discussion, come on.
So this is a program pulled by Company Workshop, the energy bus for school leaders. I got a little bit on the explanation. It's going to take place at R.C. Connor at the cost of $4,500. Have we used that program before? Is it new? Can you tell us a little bit about it?
It started this past fall. It was sponsored by the PTA this fall. And if you've followed any of Connor's tweets, or seen any of the pictures all year, or every time you go in the building, you see the bulletin boards. So this energy bus is a national organization that, it's like creating a positive climate in the building. So it started this year. The PTA sponsored it this year. There was an assembly for the kids, and then it carried it out throughout the year. There's a book that goes with it. It was carried out all throughout the year. Because it was so successful at Connor, they wanted to kind of take it to the next level, and so taking it to the next level is becoming a certified energy bus school. They will be the first school in New York State to be an energy bus school. And so then there's a higher level of training, so that's what this is.
And the focus is training the staff specifically?
Training the adults who then turnkey up with the kids.
To administer some sort of a program to the...
Yeah, it's really, I mean, it's about creating a positive climate. I mean, it's sort of literally get on the energy bus. It's like, you know, what's their catchphrase? It's like, literally, like, we're on the bus, we're moving forward. I mean, it's really sort of...
So it's character education type of program?
Yeah.
And this is the first time we're actually investing, you know...
This is our first time taking it to that higher level.
That's what I thought.
The PTA sponsored the...
We haven't approved it before, exactly.
Yeah, the initial...
Okay, so, and it sounds like only at R.C. Connor?
They're the only ones interested in it right now.
Would we open this for all elementary schools?
If they're interested, they can look into it.
So how will we, you know, get the word out or evaluate it?
I mean, I think the word's out. So at Connor, it really created a really positive environment this year, so they asked if they could, if they could take it to the next level.
And no other schools have showed interest yet?
No.
Thank you for asking my questions.
Okay, Paul?
Yes. It says time is six hours. When I added up, it was out to be seven.
7:50.
Yeah. So was it seven hours or six? There's...
It's 4,500 over six.
It's the same fee.
Right, yeah. The fee is the same.
Yeah, the fee is the same.
The fee at the time, it's actually seven.
I think it's, and I think it has to do with extended days versus faculty meetings.
Oh.
Because if you look at the particular times, the four to six is an extended day timeframe, and then 335 to 445, 435 is a faculty meeting timeframe.
Got you. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? All those who've been here by saying aye? Opposed, objections, unanimous? Okay, so 2.04 through 2.16. What? 2.04 through 2.16. I don't want to mess up the record like I always do, however. So we're using a consent for each one? What are we...
Discussion.
What's that?
A consent for discussion.
Right, but if I use a consent, then I bunch them all together?
There are others, Paul.
Okay, so it'll be, so I can move to approve all of them, and then we'll have the discussion?
But I will be making a definite motion that has to happen before that motion.
Okay, so why don't we make the motion now?
Sure. But the motion's dependent on the discussion. I'm happy to make it now if that makes your process easier. I make motion to table 2.04 to 2.16 to a future, near-future Board of Education meeting after the board has had an opportunity to have a special meeting to discuss criteria for the amendments to the contracts as well as a cap. And also following proper evaluations.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion? I think there's enough. Okay, so...
That's why this motion needed to happen after the discussion, but...
Well, I think, I think everybody knows what the motion is about based upon what we just said, so... Does anybody want a second? Okay, so I'll move on then. It's, however you write it, Angela, you're the expert. Okay, so then 2.04 through 2.16. Chairman, can I wish to accept 2.04 through 2.16 as so stated?
So moved.
Paul?
Thank you.
Paul, got it. Paul, Teresa? There you go. All right. All right, discussion?
Okay, so discussion.
Come on.
Thank you. A number of these contracts were amended as recently as October 2017 and some in January 2018. To my knowledge, correct me if I'm mistaken, no new evaluations have happened since the evaluation that prompted previous decisions to give raises or not. So the second decision is based on the same evaluations, not an additional evaluation. We're rolling on a total of salaries of over $9,500, $9,628, $723, if I'm not mistaken, and raises over $27,000. The board had in the past expressed concern about, since this particular group of people are not bound by a standard evaluation process such as other groups like collective bargaining groups, et cetera, whether they were clear criteria to honor an award of a raise or a lesser raise or no raise at all. And Dr. Adams, you had prompted the Board of Education back in the fall to meet to discuss criteria for honoring these raises as well as some sort of a cap amount to stay within every year budget depending. Since we did not establish this cap and we did not have enough time to discuss this matter, as a matter of fact, today was the first time we had a thorough discussion, I feel that is hopefully mature to make a decision whether to award raises or to hold back on raises, some recommendations for zero raises. I brought this up as soon as the items were posted to the agenda on Friday. I also want to get your attention that they were posted as facekeepers and not with attachments until some of them were attached up till yesterday and over the weekend, so we didn't have a thorough time to really read the attachments, which are the actual contract amendments. We have requested as per our policy that we always do this four days in advance, because we have a policy that the government's had that I also sent in an email that I didn't receive response to. So because of the fact that evaluations didn't reoccur since the last vote by the Board of Education, there was no cap established by the Board of Education as requested and discussed the prior time those raises were given. There were no clear set criteria, and everybody hasn't been, you know, last time it was done in the fall, and also in January it was retroactive this July, which is not exactly a perfect scenario, and we have requested a more prompt process. We can certainly do the due process and have these criteria set up and these evaluations done before we actually vote to either award raises or not award raises. Some people zero, some people, you know, up to, close to 3%. And I don't, I was told they didn't receive another evaluation since the last decisions were made. You know, spending public funds, some people have received up to 10% in the last four years, and we need to be, as we are working hard to be physically responsible, be accountable for how we're rewarding these increases. And so this is, I don't feel that we're prepared to vote yet because this process has not taken place, and today was the first discussion.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, just, I mean, I'll say with respect to the contracts, you know, we had this discussion at the last board meeting. Everybody knew what the raises were going to be back, how long the contracts were. So it's not like we're changing a lot of the paragraphs within each contract, the two items, the length and the percentage. So that was all given to everybody at the last meeting. Discuss then, and then discuss further today. With respect to, you know, the recommendations as to what these raises are, you know, the board hires one person, that's the superintendent, and the board recommends everything else. I mean, up to the top, and the superintendent recommends everything else. This is for the superintendent to recommend what he believes should be the appropriate raises for his personnel, his staff, his administrative staff. Honestly, in looking at this, I'm surprised that these were actually this low. I think with the rubric that was used the last time, Dr. Adams had presented it to the board, rather detailed process that he goes through in evaluating his staff and his...
It's becoming a certified energy bus school. They will be the first school in New York State to be an energy bus school. And so then there's a higher level of training, so that's what this is.
And the focus is training the staff specifically?
Training the adults who then turnkey up with the kids.
To administer some sort of a program to the?
Yeah, it's really, I mean, it's about creating a positive climate. I mean, it's sort of literally get on the energy bus. It's like, you know, what's their catchphrase? It's like literally, like, we're on the bus, we're moving forward. I mean, it's really sort of.
So it's a character education type of program?
Yeah.
And this is the first time we're actually investing, you know?
This is our first time taking it to that higher level.
That's what I thought.
There was the PTA sponsored the.
We haven't approved it before, exactly.
Yeah, the initial.
Okay, so, and it sounds like only at Markiplier?
They're the only ones interested in it right now.
What do we open this for, about entry school?
If they're interested, they can look into it.
So how will we, you know, get the word out or evaluate it?
I mean, I think the word's out. So at Connor, it really created a really positive environment this year. So they asked if they could, if they could take it to the next.
And no other schools have showed interest yet?
No.
Thank you for asking my questions.
Okay, Paul?
Yes, it says time is six hours when I add it up. I was at the.
More than.
Seven fifty.
Yeah. So long, so was it seven hours or six?
It's forty-five hundred over six.
It's, it's the same fee.
Right, yeah, the fee is the same.
Yeah, the fee is the same.
Yeah. The fee at the time is actually seven.
I think it's, I think, and I think it has to do with extended days versus faculty meetings.
Oh.
Because if you look at the particular times, the four to six is a extended day timeframe, and then three thirty-five to four forty-five, four thirty-five is a faculty meeting timeframe.
Got you. Okay, thanks.
Hey, Ms. Paul, as a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, unents? Okay, so two point. Oh, four to two point one six. What? Two point oh four through two point one six. I don't want to mess up the record like I always do. However, so we're using a consent for each one. What are we?
Discussion.
What's that?
A written paper discussion.
Right, but if I use a consent, then I, then I bunch them all together.
There are others.
Okay, so it'll be, so I can move to approve all of them, and then we'll have the discussion?
But I will be making a, a motion that has to happen before that motion.
Okay, so why don't we make the motion now?
Sure, but the motion's dependent on the discussion. I'm happy to make it now if that makes your process easier. I made motion to table two point oh four to two point one six to a future, near future Board of Education meeting after the board has had an opportunity to have a special meeting to discuss criteria for the amendments to the contracts as well as a cap. And also following proper evaluations.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion? I think there's enough, okay, so.
That's why this motion needed to happen after the discussion, but.
Well, I think, I think everybody knows what, what the motion is about based upon what you just said, so anybody want a second there? Okay, so I'll move on then. It's, however you write it, Angela, you're the expert. Okay, so then two point zero four through two point one six. Kerry said a motion to accept two point zero four through two point one six. As to state?
So moved.
Paul? Paul got it. Paul, Teresa? There you go, all right. All right, discussion?
Okay, so discussion.
Molly?
Thank you. A number of these contracts were amended as recently as October twenty seventeen and some in January twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. To my knowledge, correct me if I'm mistaken, no new evaluations have happened since the evaluation that prompted previous decisions to give raises or not. So the second decision is based on the same evaluations, not an additional evaluation. We're rolling on a total of salaries of over nine and a half, nine six twenty-eight, seven twenty-three, if I'm not mistaken, and raises over twenty-seven thousand. The board had in the past expressed concern about, since this particular group of people are not bound by a standard evaluation process such as other groups like collective bargaining groups, et cetera, whether they were clear criteria to honor an award of a raise or a lesser raise or no raise at all. And Dr. Adams, you had prompted the Board of Education back in the fall to meet to discuss criteria for honoring these raises as well as some sort of a cap amount to stay within every year budget depending. Since we did not establish this cap and we did not have enough time to discuss this matter, as a matter of fact, today was the first time we had a thorough discussion, I feel that is important to make a decision whether to award raises or to hold back on raises, some recommendations for zero raises. I brought this up as soon as the items were posted to the agenda on Friday. I also want to get your attention that they were posted as face keepers and not with attachments until some of them were attached up till yesterday and over the weekend. So we didn't have a thorough time to really read the attachments, which are actual contract amendments. We have requested as per our policy that we always do this four days in advance because we have a policy that the government's had that I also sent an email that I didn't receive response to. So because of the fact that evaluations didn't reoccur since the last vote by the Board of Education, there was no cap established by the Board of Education as requested and discussed the prior time those raises were given. There were no clear set criteria. And everybody hasn't been, you know, last time it was done in full and also in January it was retroactive best of July, which is not exactly a perfect scenario. And we have requested a more prompt process. We can certainly do the due process and have these criteria set up and these evaluations done before we actually vote to either award raises or not award raises. Some people zero, some people, you know, up to close to three percent. And I don't, I was told they didn't receive another evaluation since the last decisions were made. You know, spending public funds, some people have received up to ten percent in the last four years and we need to be, as we are working hard to be physically responsible, be accountable for how we're rewarding these increases. And so this is, I don't feel that we're prepared to vote yet because this process has not taken place and today was the first discussion.
Anybody else? Okay, just, I mean, I'll say with respect to the contracts, you know, we, we had this discussion at the last board meeting. Everybody knew what the raises were going to be back, how long the contracts were. So it's not like we're changing a lot of the paragraphs within each contract, the two items, the length and the percentage. So that was all given to everybody at the last meeting. Discuss then, then discuss further today. With respect to, you know, the recommendations as to what these raises are, you know, the board hires one person, that's the superintendent, and the board recommends everything else. I mean, up to the top, and the superintendent recommends everything else. This is for the superintendent to recommend what he believes should be the appropriate raises for his personnel, his staff, his administrative staff. Honestly, in looking at this, I'm surprised that they, that these were actually this low. I think with the rubric that was used the last time, Dr. Adams had presented it to the board, rather detailed process that he goes through in, in evaluating his staff and in coming up with his, in coming up with his rubric and the percentages for the raises. I think he was extremely conservative this year based upon what we, what we've all recommended in the past. So I just wanted, that's my perspective of, you know, what has gone on. In the past, he had spoken, the board hadn't said that we wanted a set criteria, it had been some discussion and some passionate discussion by some board members, but again, Dr. Adams had set the criteria. The board sets the description of the job and we've done that, we have it in our policy. In fact, we updated it two years ago, set the description of each of these jobs within our policy, that would be our job. With respect to, you know, and again, I think the contracts expire June thirtieth. Business wise, to have them renewed or not by June thirtieth. So anyway, that's my, that's my sense. Well, if it's something new.
So in response to your comments, President DeFallo, I would like to say that my comments regarding the board meeting to set a cap and more clear criteria for the superintendent was based on Dr. Adams' request to the board, not the board's request. He actually requested that we need to have these discussions based on concerns raised in the fall when we discussed the previous raises. Also, I want to clarify, I'm equally concerned whether raises are being given or zeros being given. The concern is, you know, I'm not saying we're overspending on this vote. I don't know if we are or if we're not. So based on what you're saying, that he was conservative in giving raises, well, at times that, that's, that's a subjective issue. So you could be, you know, conservative on one and not on the other. So again, how do we base the decision is based on solid criteria. And in past discussions, he asked the board to stay and establish those to a cap.
And again, I think he agrees with the sentiment, so.
Right.
I'll call the question. All those are favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
One abstention. Okay, there we go. All right, administrative reports. Mr. Guccione, if you would, the Shack report. Thank you, she's very much for being here. Speak in a loud, clear voice, please.
Hi, everyone, I'm Andy Guccione. I'd like to do a quick presentation tonight on the School Health Advisory Committee. I'm going to start with, maybe not everybody might know what the School Health Advisory Committee is, so I was just, it stands for in two thousand and six, the New York State Education Department required all issues to establish a shack provided by CBI throughout the district to achieve and enhance students' wellness. We adopted a new policy in November two thousand and sixteen, Dr. DeKean and I, and also Kerry Steinhorff, the liaison, the Rock County Department of Health to the schools, were ultimately to get this new policy in effect. Here are some highlights. We encourage to have the following members on, and we do have fairly active, just about everybody on there. Next year, definitely a goal, we haven't had a student on next year, we'd definitely like to get a student on next year. We have had a number of parents on the committee and everybody outside there has been represented. They don't attend every meeting, meet about three times a year. Okay, some of the things that the policy has gone over, list of appropriate foods for celebrations and snacks, this is something that we worked on this spring. And we are prepared probably, I mean, we have a meeting tomorrow where we hope to finalize it. The meeting could be postponed if we don't get enough attendance at the meeting, so I'm wanting to, I've already corresponded on that. But that's something we hope to have done by the summer. The district may implement other initiatives that will create a school environment, can basically assist in wellness messages, uses to help eating, physical activity. March Forward and Wellness Fair are examples of that, and that's something I'll cover in some of the slides. The district should only market advertised food providers that meet the FDA's smart snack standards, and anybody can find those online, it'd be very easy to find if you serve smart snacks and find what's acceptable according to the Food Drug Administration, what isn't. Non-food items encouraged to be used as rewards and incentives for students. So we all kind of know that we live in a culture surrounded by food. I mean, we just had a sports banquet last week and we had a big meal and I think everybody was happy with it, but we also know that there's unfortunately a lot of students, it seems to be a growing number of students inside the district and everywhere, that have aversions to food, have allergies to food, and therefore there's could be a lot of anxiety created around certain things that are food based. So we're trying to, we're not going to change the culture overnight. We are trying to take small steps here and there to try to establish more non-food items at a lot of our awards ceremonies, things like that. Like I said, not going to have it overnight, I'm not promising we're ever going to eliminate food as part of a lot of our celebrations, but it is something that we continue to talk about on the Shack committee meetings. Also, updated standards for school meals. Okay, two thousand and sixteen, we hosted a health and wellness showcase, that was instrumental in bringing it to the high school. It was a nice event, it was Tell them High School Cafeteria. We held it at a time where we thought we could catch a lot of students either coming out of school or coming out of their athletic practices, just to come in and have local businesses and stakeholders present their product that promotes health and wellness within the community that students and parents have access to, something we'd like to bring back to suffer in the future. These are some of the activities that were included. We had a microphone, we had music, there were a lot of young kids that came and they danced and they participated in a lot of activities. We have physical activity contests, games based on traditional knowledge as it says. It was a nice event and I think that if we bring it back, we'll probably take some steps to promote it even further and get more participation. And that's something that we'll probably talk about next year, probably in the meeting in the fall. Okay, March Forward, I would say this is definitely one of my favorite initiatives with this group. Now, for those who don't know what March Forward is, basically the first Friday of every March, district wide, we hold what's called March Forward, and we send out links so teachers can find activities that they can do that are called brain breaks, or activity brain breaks. As the evidence mounts between physical activity, blood flow through the brain, excuse me, and the ability of students to focus in class and for longer periods of time continues to mount, this is something that will continue to gain momentum. Now, two years ago, we had Suffolk Middle School won a reward for Rockland County for highest participation of all the middle schools in the county, as at this point, most of the districts do participate in this. Now, the main goal is not, we can't hold, as much as I like to say we can't do it every month or every week, but it introduces all our staff to the idea of having brief brain breaks or incorporating brain breaks into their lessons to help get the most out of the students when they're sitting down. As we know, the younger the student is, the less is their ability to concentrate for long periods of time. You see evidence of this particularly in Viola and Suffolk Middle School, where there are teachers that are on a fairly regular basis incorporating brain breaks and had success with it, and it's something that I hope to promote, especially with our teaching staff in the classrooms moving forward. At the end of the event, staff reports their minutes into a program, a competing program that Kerry Steinhorff has mentioned before, liaison, liaison to Rockland County Department of Health has helped put together for us. And hopefully next year, we'll win another award. Okay, just to go over some past Shack Agenda items, because we do encourage participation. We, we have a number of people on the list, but typically we'll have anywhere from six to nine people come to the meetings. So cafeteria big contract, this is a big one that we'd like to look at next year and possibly have some advice or input as far as the specs that we put out when the local vendors, right now it'll be using our heart, will bid on these contracts and what are standards for our food that we're putting in our cafeterias. So we'd like to just review that, possibly have some, give some feedback. Hand soles air pressure has been covered, are we meeting New York State standards? One of our facilities directors, head of storage, Jessica, is instrumental in all those conversations as it's his job to make sure we're following the state regulations, the hand soles air pressure, other things that we're putting in the classroom that students might have aversions to. Food allergy awareness meeting comes up every May, so this past year, we didn't do such a great job promoting it, I hope to do a better job next year. There are some schools looking into school guards, including that. At this point, I think there's a twenty percent project to look at from students initiative at the high school, so that is something we will continue to try to build on. Organized events at the RISAS, a lot of varying opinions on this, but students have their own ability to organize their own events, or should be organized for them, and those are conversations I'll continue to have with the schools and phys ed staff. Gluten free food options, again, it seems we have a growing number of students every year that gluten is one of the big ones where they have an aversion to, and we need to make sure that we have options for those students. I know, for example, the senior sports banquet, I had a few requests come to me, three hundred people that came for special deals, we can make sure we can accommodate for that. Epicent availability in training, it's usually headed by the nurses. Wellness workshops and training available in Rockland, Kerry Steinhorff again, will send me occasional emails, I'll forward out the different opportunities people have to educate themselves further and to turnkey that information to our committee. The Tila pumpkin movement was another one, now again, going back to our discussion before on trying to have non-food celebrations and non-food rewards. If anybody hasn't heard of it, basically if you put a Tila pumpkin outside of your house, that's telling kids that have major allergies, nut allergies, some of the more common ones, that you can come to that house on Halloween and you can get something that's a non-food item, still be a part of Halloween, so you won't feel left out or that you can't go in certain houses. So these are some of the things that we've discussed, a number of other Agenda items, these are some of the ones that came up, posted up in the past year. Okay, so we're always looking for new members, and if you'd like to get involved, be sure, my email address is on the website, be sure to contact me or Dr. DeKean, and we'd be glad to have more people come in. We are meeting tomorrow, hopefully we get hold of meeting, I'm not a hundred percent, but you know, we look forward to working with more people. So if you're interested, please be sure to contact, have support on any question.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs.
I have a, just an item that we need to discuss, Matt will help me with this. When we met with Senator David.
Is Matt up to come tomorrow?
He's helping. The advocacy committee, Matt was sent to David Calucci last Thursday. One of the items that came up is that school districts can get a higher reimbursement on school meals if they purchase a certain proportion of locally grown produce and food. Are we taking advantage of that program in order to restore reimbursement?
No, and that's one of the things I hope to investigate when we start looking.
Great, and if you want, are you familiar with the legislation or should we get you?
I'll contact Kerry, she'll send me more information. I have read some information, but it's been a while, so I need your permission.
Because he did bring this up on Thursday as one of the incentives to, in release in our form to school programs. And not necessarily from to school, he said it was produced anywhere in New York State, not necessarily around the corner, although obviously fresh food is a healthier choice, but anywhere from the state of New York is how the program is worked. Okay, thank you.
Discuss tomorrow, we're listening.
What time do we meet tomorrow?
It's four to five thirty in the guidance conference room at the high school. Like I said, I'm sending an email in the morning, I haven't had many people come back to the convention, so I may have a different schedule, but I'll let everyone know by ten AM tomorrow. Sure, any other questions?
No, Matt, I mean.
That's all right.
Okay, four point zero one, advocacy committee.
So segueing right into the advocacy committee report, the committee, Matt was sent to David Calucci last Thursday, in the race of March and based out of June, that's what happens when you add it up whole. Two board members to our presence, Mr. Chairman myself, as well as two members of the community. This was rescheduled from the original date of March, that's why my March was there, I was thinking about it. We have rescheduled because, again, he was tied up with budget work in Albany, and so you have to cancel the same day. We discussed several relevant items with the senator, we met us here in Helburn building. First priority was regarding a utility assessment bill, if anyone wants to look that up, it's S seven three oh one. I won't get into the details of the bill because we discussed it executive with our attorney, Mr. Probstman. But the gist of the bill is that it's a study bill that asks the commissioner of taxation and governance to prepare a report by a certain deadline that was supposed to be made to evaluate assessments on utility properties being conducted by Albany assessors as opposed to local assessors, and possibly suggesting a cap or a scale to the tax revenue from utility companies. This would affect our district negatively if, in fact, that study recommends a bill that puts that into effect. So we're watching for that very closely and we're working with Senator Coach's office and also members of Assembly, like Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe is also keeping an eye on this and trying to secure that report whenever it's public. The next item we discussed on, we shared with the senator, are two resolutions that the Board of Education passed in March, namely the state aid resolution as well as the resolution regarding the utilization of pilots. We opposed the utilization of pilots to assess and to decide on taxation on state-owned properties. And everybody can refer to those resolutions. We passed them to the senator and he also had a discussion with us regarding state aid runs. Mr. Kuscheran provided us a very useful spreadsheet that compared our revenue from state aid compared to the foundation aid formula and compared it to other districts in Rockland County. The spreadsheet was also passed on to the senator in order to show that our, the gap, the difference between our state figures and what we would have received as a district from foundation aid is wider than other districts. Am I saying that correctly? So it was useful information to pass along to the senator and he's looking into that as well. He is a proponent of evaluating districts based on current poverty indexes and not the two thousand numbers that are currently being used. I know we've had discussions about that, so he's for more current numbers or evaluations. We renewed the discussion regarding the tax collection bill and we want to share that he's thinking of a new legislature actually, that he's working on to, instead of, instead of original bill that would allow school districts to collect their own taxes, it would actually leave the option to the municipality, but put a cap to the amount that can be charged. So we will have our eyes open for that legislature, that would be the way out from, to the, goes to governor, has to go to the original tax collection bill.
Do you mind that he suggests any percentage panel?
He explained that our radical numbers are unmatched and we knew that. So he's aware of that, the one percent.
He was thrown out initially, I mean, it was maybe a half a percent, but I mean, I think he needs to get that lower.
Even lower.
Maybe a quarter percent.
And that's something we can work with him right now, that's why it's good to get that head start. And that's why we didn't like wait till next year to meet with him and welcome that to a meeting, because we can get to work on several of those issues already. So if we can give him feedback now as to, you know, what is a reasonable figure to advocate for, what he said is like many municipalities charge absolutely nothing and those who charged are charged anywhere near one percent. So that's the, you know, that's what jumps at you when you look at this, again, comparative report. So if you have a recommendation that we can start advocating with Ellen, with Assembly member Jaffe and Senator Calucci. Like zero would be obviously my choice too. We also discussed with him a new legislature on APPR that Senator Flaggen has put out. I shared that information with the board and it's not a favorable legislature in terms of teacher evaluations, but also puts in the evaluations as a collective bargaining item on districts, which no district wants to take off than that. And I think, you know, teachers want to either, if I'm guessing correctly. But there's also obvious advantages in that bill where it basically takes away some of the oversight that others are advocating for on charter schools. So it's actually supportive of charter schools and not public schools. So we need to. So we need to be very aware of that legislature, everybody has the information if anybody wants to see it again, but he doesn't think it's going to get through, but we can't take anything for granted, obviously. We also discussed some mental health initiatives that are here in Rockland County that we feel we want to share the details with everyone and see how we can take advantage of some of it. We discussed opioid recovery schools and increasing the funding for them, as well as some peer opioid support programs for recovery. And then some suicide prevention resources as well. He would like to hold some community events in Southern Central, similar to others he has had in other districts. For example, an Arcan training event, if we are open to that initiative. I personally recommend that that happens, it's a great program, everybody leaves the training with a free Arcan kit and as we all know, this could be life-saving. The other program he would like to also conduct here is to increase awareness on electronic nicotine devices, which are growing rapidly among youth and unfortunately children. We discussed with him new legislature that is being proposed to increase the bill, the setting age in New York State across the state of 21, with the sale of tobacco products and nicotine electronic devices. Currently, some counties are already doing that, the sale age is 21, but not all across the state, so it would be a statewide legislature, which again, I recommend we support absolutely, just to make it harder on young people to become addicted at such a young age to these devices. Also, we know how they explode and the battery issues, but more importantly, the cumulative effects, which are very negative, starting at a young age with raises and not fully developed, et cetera. And finally, he would like to continue the dialogue with our district, and I'm very happy that he is, and we did thank him specifically for the grant for our food team, so we thank him in person for that support. Thank you.
Thanks, please.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any questions? All right, public participation, this is public participation as to any school district business, not just the action items, any school district business, such for lasting hold over 30 minutes, if you have any comments to be made, please step up to the podium, state the name, school affiliation, and leave some sort of contact information to the appropriate staff member to get back to you if necessary. Again, we pray for making comments with respect to any student or school district personnel.
Hello? Teresa Isolede Montavello. Tonight, I would just like to say a few words about two people. One of you spells her name correctly and the other one does not. I met these two women, I met these two women when they became neighbors on the trail, then they became board members and now I owe my friends. Tonight, as taxpayers in this amazing school district, I would like to thank Teresa and Terry for all their hard work and dedication over the years on the board. I have witnessed a small percentage of it and I know how much they love this district and how much time they've devoted to making it a better place for all of us. If I listed my clear accomplishments, I'd go over my three minutes.
Do you know who I love?
Today. That's Eric. Let me say that we were all much better off as districts because of them. They have always put the needs of the children and taxpayers above any personal agenda. They have fought hard to do it as right and move this district in a positive direction. My hope is, although they no longer be on board, that they will continue to fight for us and to support us. So tonight, I want to thank you as a neighbor, a taxpayer, an employee of Southern Central, as a person who loves this district and as a friend. Thank you for your hard work, thank you for caring so much about this district and for making distance in the lives of all our children.
Thank you. Thank you. Teresa, I wanted to come over and give you some compliments. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa.
Teresa, I always want to spell it correctly. Not Teresa. Thank you, Teresa, I appreciate that very much.
My name is Michelle Brock Patel, I live in Suffolk. Back on last year of October 30th, I sent Dr. Adams to the board an email and asked today, I never received a response. It's been, I've been coming to the school board meetings since September and you always say, we need your name and info, we'll get back to you, but I guess emails are treated differently. I'm a Southern High School graduate, 1984, and one of my kids goes to the school district because of our great reputation here. When I go to my kids' meet the teachers' night, I always walk out saying how lucky we are. The technology, the classrooms, the sports, et cetera, they're top-notch and as we are taxpayers, we're responsible for that. As taxpayers, we also deserve answers, we deserve to have our children feel safe at school. If you read my email, though, back to October 30th of last year, one of the things that I said was, I know we have a set of these to teach kids, but when a principal, a superintendent, deputy superintendent, and a school board don't get involved when a 10-year-old boy is told to kill himself, that's a problem. Have you seen the news about young kids who are bullied in school and they end up killing themselves? Every bullying allegation should be taken seriously. I personally know this boy, who is now 11 years old, and many of you know him, and it sickens me that you destroyed this boy's experience in elementary school. This little boy will never be the same. You have no idea what this little boy is going through and what their parents are going through. You may not like his kids' parents, but this little boy should have been protected and shown that this district cared about him. For some of you, this is your last war of the evening and I do thank you for the things you've done in the past that are good, but when it came to this 10-year-old little boy with his disabilities, you failed him. Next time you hug your child or grandchild, look at their happy faces, and then put yourselves in the parents of this 10-year-old's place. It's unthinkable what this family is going through, I personally say it. They've reached out to you, all of you, and you guys have done nothing. This little boy should have enjoyed his last year in elementary school and he didn't. I honestly don't know how you can go to sleep at night knowing that this child is suffering because of all of you. I hope that the new board members listen to the power of taxpayers and they protect our children. Thank you.
No, very good. Close that portion of the meeting, superintendents comments? None?
Stand up, that's what you guys
Can we not make this over?
So I'm joined by my colleagues on the Board of Education here, Mr. Shapiro, Officer Donovan, and Mr. Craman, and myself, to thank our retiring school board members and to possess all of a small token of our appreciation. And I will start in alphabetical order with Teresa DeFaulco. Teresa served two terms, a total of six years, starting in 2012, is that correct? And has served as our board president for the past four years, all those six years, and we would like to thank you for your service to the school district and your service on the Board of Education. If you would please come forward. Teresa Mannheim has served, if you would please join us, has served for two years and four terms, a total of 14 years, I did say that, beginning in 2004, so she would be the longest sitting board member on the
Since '04.
Since '04.
Well, I don't know about
Well, I said sitting, so I did say longest, who's currently on our board. So we appreciate your service to Southern Central and to the school board and your dedication to the kids and our district. Thank you very much. And not with us this evening is our third retiring board member, Chief Clark Osborne. Chief Osborne had served starting in 2004 up to 2014, and that was three terms in one year, only to return in 2015 for one last, we don't know if it's the last, but one more board term, and he also has served on our board as the vice president for the past three years, we appreciate his service to his community through his outside work as well as his service to Southern Central and the Board of Education, we have spoken for him as well. Thank you.
I did break my toe like 20 minutes before I came here, so that's why I apologize. So first, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody in the district, teachers, staff, and everybody over the years, and I would just say that as board members, you do put others always at the top of mind, the community, the students, the teachers. I started this because I came to meetings and coming to meetings to advocate for my son who has a different ability, which is what I like to say, and he's now 23, and I'm most proud of the accessibility in the district, safety plans, evacuation plans, that really came of just educating people. I went to school in this district, I went to Connor, which was Cypress Road, as did my husband, and I couldn't believe that somebody with special needs with a physical disability couldn't go in the front door of Connor when he started his first day. And a lot has changed over the years and that, to me, was something that I just helped, I think, to educate people in that aspect of things, and there are a lot of different disabilities. My son's happens to be physical. And I'm just proud of the work that we've done over the years as a different board members. Obviously, it's changed over the years, and I want to thank the public for the support for continuing to vote for me. I gave my three-year notice, the last election, which is more than anybody else ever gives, but it's time to spend more time with my son who does have a terminal illness. You'll notice that nobody is here for my family, although they were here when I was elected for the first time. But my son said, I'm not getting out of my hospital bed while my nurse is here and getting into my wheelchair, so I allowed him to not be here, and my husband's in Boston, and my daughter's babysitting his other nurse's daughter. So apparently, they were more excited when I got voted on than coming to say goodbye to me. But I do appreciate what I've learned in this district as well, about our community, about the people, and the heart, so thank you. Now you've got to top it, Teresa. I don't know why you're crying, I tried one more commercial, so I apologize. I just want to, I want to thank, at the very least, and there's so many people to thank, but Angela first and foremost, because first of all, doing things is brutal at times, and you know, I knew, call you up, Angela, and then you'd help me through with an issue or whatever the case might be, you'd kind of check on me when I'm doing something, maybe not pursuant to Robert's rules during the meeting, you kind of kept us straight, so without that, this just would not work, so you were awesome at your job and I truly appreciate it and I would have been able to do it without you in particular, really, really true. Lee, one thing, leaving the board, I'm confident that you sitting in that chair with that title and that position, I feel like you can handle anything, you can handle anything and anyone, no matter what questions are asked, no matter what is asked of you to do, you're like a powerhouse in that position, I really appreciate it, I just, you know, I wish you the best of luck and continue to do what you do. Steve, you've been awesome, you have been, you do everything in this district, you really do, and I know you've been extremely supportive of the work that Dr. Adams does, you've taken on this job as, you know, the deputy superintendent, and you do everything, you do everything, and it's like, you're like the jack of all trades in this district, and I know if I ever had a question and Dr. Adams didn't answer my text message, then I would text Steve and in a second I would get an answer. So Steve, you know, I really appreciate that, I appreciate the respect that you've shown me, and keep doing what you're doing, keep doing what you're doing. Teresa Isolede, I got it, I mean, you know, you, we were neighbors, you know, we did stoop a couple times, you know, on the trail, which was awesome, but you, you do an amazing job, you really do an amazing job. When I first was on the board, you didn't really come to the meetings and present the finances and what have you, and to be honest, now you do, and you add such a different light to it, you can answer any question posed of you, you are truthful, matter of fact, you know, and sometimes, you know, it is what it is, this is, you know, and I appreciate that honesty because instead of trying to make it up and kind of tripping over yourself, you're like, no, this is what it is, and this is why we do it, and you're confident in what you do, and that's really important, especially when you're dealing with a lot of money, like we deal with, so. And again, I appreciate your support, I know you've been extremely supportive of me during my six years here, so thank you very much. And then, of course, my mom was, it's kind of pathetic, but my mom, she spelled my name wrong at birth, she was, I didn't ask for her, she did, but you know, whatever, she's, she'll cry, I'll cry for anything, really. Board members, I mean, all of you, and this board, the last boards that I've been part of, always amazing, always kind of keeping everybody on their toes, making sure that all the questions are asked, whether it is a meeting or whether it is an administration. Tommy and Paul, you were great additions to the board last year, just level-headed, reasonable, you've got a lot of history, so you can provide a ton of insight to board members, because you've been there on every level, Paul, with respect to teaching, administrator, you've even been, you know, the principal of the schools here, so you have great insight and I hope people listen to you very much, because you have a lot, a lot to gain. And Matt, for some reason, I don't know why, I think you're the numbers guy, I don't think you work with numbers at work, but you like, well, you like numbers, so I think, keep asking questions about the numbers, because I know Teresa loves it, Teresa loves the questions about the numbers.
The gift that keeps on giving.
The gift that keeps on giving. And lastly, of course, Dr. Adams, you know, when you came to this district, you were, I think you were here before me, but I don't think you knew what you were getting into, I think you had, the first three months, you had, what, 15 lawsuits piled up on you, you went through a crazy time with, initially with issues with the district attorney's office and things that were going on in this district. It was a culture of, you know, everybody just kind of doing what they used to do and not being afraid of that change, and you brought such great change to this district, not only in the mindset and the thoughts of the people who work here, but just in every aspect of the district. Kind of, I feel like you've opened us up to more free thinkers where, and it would please help also, to allow the staff to think outside the box and come up with other ideas and say, can we try this? And as long as it's, it's based, as we always said, they can try new things, and it's so important, adding the technology, adding the security, adding the major spaces of the classrooms, I mean, there's so many things, let's just go on and on, as to what you've done and your staff have done since you've been here. We are, Grand Central, Southern Central is in a much larger place than we were before you got here, I wholeheartedly believe that. We have outside pressures on this district, we've had them before, several years in the last Several years in the last six to eight years, it has become extremely more intense with the outside pressures. And you've stood there, you know, with confidence, with focus, to say, "This is what we need to do." And you've done great things, not only to protect the district, but even protecting some of the villages that surround us from other outside sources. So I don't, sometimes I don't think you get enough credit. If anybody sees Dr. Adams from schools, he knows every kid, every kid's brother, every kid's sister. He'll talk to a kid, say, "Oh, yeah, I saw your sister in elementary school," you know? And he can tell them something about them. So I've always told you in our meetings, you are the rock star of the district. The kids would love to see you come in. I talked to them now. I talked to a lot of seniors this year with my son graduating. They'd love to see you come in the district, and they're like, when you say hi to them, their ego disappears. So, but again, not to be old sappy and all, but, because I really don't, but thank you very much for being here. I hope that you maintain that focus, that great mind, and keep going with what you're, what you're really on this district to be. And that's it. Thank you. I forgot somebody, Andy Bolwes. None of my glasses on, so I don't really see yours, though. But thank you again. Thank you. All right, excellent. Can I just say one more thing to the board? Please continue donating yearbooks every year to a needy high school student in the honor that I think I started maybe six, seven years ago because they really do need it. There are kids that just can't afford it, and it touches my heart. We all do sometimes.
No, I'm just crying.
Oh, and take pictures of graduation. Those parents love getting candid shots of the kids while they're up on the dais. It really makes a difference. So I've got my list array. The people are texting me to take pictures of their kids. I'm doing my best. That's it. Remember what happened last year? Knocking people over to take pictures. I don't know. All right, so, oh, sorry.
In my closing remarks, whatever I say pale in comparison to what the board members said, retiring board members, they did allude to the many challenges that the district faces and a lot of external pressures, some internal. And I've got to say, the board members, and our retiring board members in particular, have tried to handle those pressures with grace, with dignity and humility. And I got to work a lot with the two Terezas in the Policy Committee, going over 672 different policies, which is really anonymous work. But, you know, we got through a policy manual that was 35 years out of date and got that fairly current. So I thank them for that. Meeting with the board president Thursday before, normally would be a four-hour meeting, arguing over the agenda, and I won't miss that. But Teresa, Teresa, thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. I really appreciate it, and you will leave us. Thank you.
Okay, 7.01, motion to adjourn. So Teresa, second. Come on, you're all the favorites. You can find by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So those abstentions.